This is the May 13, 2025 special meeting of the City Council of Lewisville, Colorado. Can I get a roll call?
Mayor Protem Dickinson.
Here.
Councilmember Fahey.
Here.
Mayor Lay.
Here.
Councilmember Cooperman.
Here.
Councilmember Hefner.
Here.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Here.
Councilmember Kern.
Here.
Would you stand with me and say the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right. Tonight, we have a couple of things on the menu. Well, the first is that we have a joint meeting between council and the cultural advisory board. And we've just a quick setup, and then I'll turn it over to staff. We have done this for, on a number of occasions in the last year to try to give the boards and commissions an opportunity to talk with us about what they're doing, what they would like to do in terms of advising us and getting a chance to meet and chat a little bit. But first, why don't we go around and introduce ourselves? Go ahead and start, if you would.
Mohamed Ali and one of the advisory board members. Advising our arts here in Lewisville.
Yeah, go ahead.
JR, Chair of the advisory board. And then we're gonna have to hear this.
I'm sorry.
That was Judy Kern, City Council, Representative Ward Two. Caleb Dingsen, City Council, Ward One.
Josh Cooperman, City Council, Ward One as well.
Dietrich Hefner, Ward Three, thanks for joining us.
Barbara Hamilton, Ward Three.
Chris Lay, Mayor, welcome.
Deb Fahey, Ward Two.
Diana Langley, City Manager.
And I'm Samantha Fox, Deputy City Manager.
I'm Melinda Colley from the City Attorney's Office.
Kristen Bodine, Interim Cultural Services Director.
I'm Alexander Phillips-Master. I'm on the cultural advisory board as well.
Iris Polanski, the Arts and Events Program Manager, and this is my second year, and I am the liaison to the board.
Okay, first thing we're gonna do is to take some public comment, and then we'll go to the staff presentation. So I don't know whether anybody's got their hand up, but it looks like the clerk says.
Leah Franks.
And just quickly, you have three minutes. You'll see the timer up there and tell us what you want to tell us. And if you could tell us where your name and where you're from.
Yeah, I'm Leah Franks. I live in Lewisville. I'm gonna read because I have a three-month-old baby at home and I'm very tired. So I am here to stress the value of the cultural advisory board and totally appreciate City Council's effort to meet with the board today. I served on the cultural council for five years, and I am an alum of last year's Colorado Business Committee for the Arts cohort. And I am currently the chair of a nonprofit in Lewisville called Friends of Lewisville Arts, Sciences and Humanities. We go by FLYSH. FLYSH's mission is to advocate for cultural vitality in Lewisville, but our miss- mission, or sorry, our vision is to strategically unify local organizations around our shared goals of cultural and art advocacy. And we have one particular project which we started to work on that I'll mention in a minute. It is now more important than ever to prioritize support for the arts in Lewisville. Art unifies communities, drives tourism, economic vitality, creates jobs, leads to civic engagement, and helps understand other cultures. With the recent cuts to the cultural services budget and cancellation of millions of dollars of federal arts and humanities grants, I wanted to encourage the council to utilize the folks on the cultural advisory board as efficiently as possible. Iris and John have done a great job at picking up the pieces from a couple of down years, the last couple of years, for a number of reasons. Colorado is the number one state in participation in the arts, but one of the worst at city or government funding for the arts. As you know, cultural programming funds come from SEFD, and with an uncertain economic future, that's concerning. We don't know what's gonna happen the last, you know, or the next couple of years with those sales tax funds. One more thing, Lewisville lacks any accessible or inclusive performing arts spaces. I'm enthused to hear about potential upgrades to Steinbach Pavilion, and I know that public comment has kind of come and gone as far as the downtown vision plan. But please consider what an inclusive performing arts space means as far as looking beyond the downtown business stakeholders and who might utilize spaces like that. FLYSH has already started the process of meeting with city staff, other community organizations like Center Stage, other municipalities like Northline Arts, and the folks behind Create Boulder to start a conversation about maybe building a new inclusive performing arts space in Lewisville. And I'm hoping that City Council can hear more about that soon and be supportive of that. But keep up the good work, Cultural Arts Advisory Board.
Thank you very much. Perfect. Any others?
No.
No? Okay. You wanna take it away?
All right, Jenny, can you please pull up the presentation? Thank you. And next slide, please. Oh, thanks, Jenny. All right, so for the purpose of this meeting, it's the annual joint meeting with the City Council. We will overview the cultural advisory board's role, review the 2025 City Council priorities and work plan, the 2025 CAB priorities, and then discussion and direction from council. Next slide, please. So we did introductions, and the cultural advisory board is advisory to the City Council. It provides an advisory capacity to the City Council on matters related to the arts and culture. Next slide, please. So the CAB advises the City Council and staff in connection with cultural programming, the future development of arts and culture in Lewisville, and matters that support the equal rights and opportunity to participate in culture, advise on the allocation of funds in support of the arts, advise in matters relating to the city's cultural arts master plan, including advising on master plan updates in medium and long-term planning for arts and events, and plan and execute an annual outdoor concert series. Next slide, please. And then this is just a reminder that all city boards are subject to the Colorado Open Records Act and open meetings rule in the Home Rule Charter. So if you're not familiar with that, we can provide additional information. And the rules of procedure in place for all boards, and then the bylaws are, updates are coming. And with that, we'll move on to the 2025 council work plan. So the council has four priorities: economic vitality, core services, safety, and affordable housing, which are viewed through two lenses: equity, diversity, and inclusion, and environmental sustainability. And with that, we will turn it over to the advisory board.
The thing I want to do is I want to thank everybody for coming. You know, I also want to thank the cultural advisory board members who came to support this. If you guys have any input you would like to give while I'm doing this, please raise your hand. We'll be able to do that. So let's, um, let's get started. As we mentioned earlier, my name is JR Kettleson. I'm the Chair of the Cultural Advisory Board. A couple of things before I go into 2024 is, as you know, last year we became an advisory board. Before that, you know, I don't know what our, I don't know what our description was, but we were not in an advisory role. We were actually in kind of like a voting role where we had to have a quorum, and we had to vote on anything that was like more than $500. So all the entertainment that happened, like concerts in the park, you know, anything that we did at the Center for the Arts that was more than $500 for an artist, we had to get together, we had to have a meeting, and we had to vote on that and have a majority approve that. Since we've become an advisory board, I just want to point out how much more efficient it is and how much, you know, I, you know, was skeptical at first. But now I will tell you that working with Iris and John has been a real pleasure, and we just get a lot more stuff done now than we did before. So what you're gonna see for 2024 is going to reflect that if you compare that to 2023. So go to the next slide here. Okay. So our, what's that? Oh. So if you look at our 2024 highlights, so to begin with, we advised on development and installation of three public art projects. They included the mural that's out front, on the Pollinator mural, the Marshall Fire Pet Memorial that happened over in the Arboretum, and then the Community Resilience Sculpture that got installed right out in front of City Hall as well. I do want to point out that we had funding, and we were going to fund a mural at Steinbach, but there were some issues, you know, structural issues at Steinbach. So we had to, we had, we weren't able to move forward with that. We'd love to be able to move forward with some of that funding this year for public art installations, so. If you have questions on any of this as we go along, please, please let me know. Sorry about that. Okay, sorry about that. I apologize about that. So highlights, we advised, strategized, and volunteered actively on arts and entertainment's most dynamic and complete year of events, you know, I think we've ever had based on coming out of this, this board. So last year, there were 27 total events. 23 were one-off events. Those one-off events are things like the block party that we have, the movie on Main Street that we have, the concerts in the park, and all of the music that we do at the Center for the Arts. We also had some things for children at the, at the, the My, what's that? My Nature Lab. So we had some great diversity in the events we did, but that was by far the most events that we have ever done. And it was, it was based on the people that are in this room. They were all part of the board last year. And then, of course, as I mentioned, Iris is just very efficient at what she does, so. So all those events we had, over 20,000 people, you know, attended those events. So we had 20,000 people come in to those, to those events. So it's a really, it was a really big year for us, and we had a lot of diversity in our, in our presentations that we had in our events. It was really, it was just such a pleasure to be part of it. It was just a lot of fun last year. So we, we are responsible for finding, finding the talent and booking the talent and the sound for the summer concerts in the park. We do that. Last year, we did five of those summer concerts. This year, prices going up, we're only gonna be able to do four. We'd love to be able to do more, so if we can find the money, we would love to do more. But we're gonna do four this year. That'll be fun. Last year, we did five. They were all well-attended. It was probably, we think it was between 750 and 1,200 people were at each one of those events. We selected five recipients for art grants. We do an art grant program where we have five art grants that are worth $2,000 apiece, and they have to be done in Lewisville. And so people will apply for those, and then as a board, we will go through those, and we will select, based on criteria, we will judge those, and then we will, we will make those awards. We usually get between 15 and 20 applications for that. Last year, we had five. This year, we have five. And we also developed a new scoring matrix for that to make it easier for the board members and, you know, to, so they could understand, you know, truly, if you're looking at EDI as a criterion, then what does that truly mean to be a one, two, three, four, or five? And we've got the matrix built out for that. Next slide. From last year? I can give you one. I have to thank, so we just did that this year, so that's freshest in my mind. One of the things we had last year was Bingo's Birthday, which was a play geared towards children. And so, you know, the audience for that was supposed to be parents with young children. And so that's an example of that, you know, reaching out to those audiences that some of these events don't necessarily reach out to. That was one of them. We had Transformative Stories was another one. That was last year. It was another one that we did last year. Transformative Stories was stories about trans individuals, you know, the trans community. So that's a couple of them from last year. This year, we had, oh, yeah. Yeah, it's, 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 yeah, anyway, those were a couple we did last year. Last year, also one of the, yeah, that's, that's, that's what we did for last year, so. Yeah, we can, yeah, we can provide more examples.
I have a question on the same thing, actually. How, how are you guys advertising it to the community? So that not only, we would already be sitting here knowing the answer to that question, but all of our residents know how exciting and what you've done. I mean, I've heard about some of these, but I didn't realize they were part of the, like, words that you did.
Are you talking specifically about the art grants as an example? So the application for that is on the city website. And so the advertising for that goes out, you know, in city newsletters.
Okay.
And then I believe we advertise that on social media for the city as well.
Okay.
And I'm not chastising anybody, just going forward. Why don't we let, finish the presentation, and then we can ask questions, which I think we'll have plenty of.
Sure. Okay, just as a note, he asked us to interrupt.
I know. But I'm suggesting that we, I'm suggesting we do it.
My bad.
Good order.
Don't interrupt me anymore, okay? But I've had enough of this.
We did that.
There we go. So one of the things we started last year is we started establishing some new cultural traditions in Lewisville. An example of that is the block party that started right after the Marshall Fire. And it was done, the first block party was done over at the fire station across from the rec center. And then two years ago, that came to the downtown fire station, fire station number one. We blocked off the street, and we had music come in, and we were doing a, we were doing a partnership with Cultural Caravan on Boulder. This year, we're going to do that again, and so this will be our third, it's be our fourth year, actually, mayor's fourth year this year. And this year, the city, we're doing that on our, on our own to, to bring that, that, that event together. So this has become now an annual event that's become a new tradition. So we will do this every year, and it's a fun event, you know? I mean, people enjoy it. Last year, it was stepped up to a higher level. We had, we actually had tables people could sit at. We had food trucks. We had more food trucks there. We had entertainment for children. It truly became like a community event, and I think it's something that people will look forward to. And I will remind you, that's coming up, you know, in the, in the near future. It's at the, June 8th, that's coming up, so. So we hope that you can come and join us at that. The other thing we did, another new tradition that we started last year was the movie on Main. And so movie on Main, I think, also is something that will lend itself to help with like economic vitality, because people are gonna come down to Main, are gonna come down to Main Street. They're gonna want to go to the local restaurants. They're gonna want to go to the local, you know, brew pubs. And last year, unfortunately, we had a power outage right before it happened, and some of the businesses closed down, and they didn't open back up. But we still had hundreds of people, you know, at that movie, and we've got a slide on that a little bit later. Developing greater unity as a team through successful transition. I've already, I've already addressed that, you know, how successful we are and just how streamlined things are now, and things just get done much more efficiently. And then our increased efficiency as a, as a volunteer body. So our priorities related to council's work. Economic vitality. We just mentioned something about the movie on Main, you know, and how that can help some of the downtown businesses. But, you know, arts and events directly affect economic vitality by attracting visitors and encouraging local spending. There are studies that suggest for every dollar a city spends on arts, you know, you get like $4.50 back. I don't have sources on that, but there are a lot of, there are a lot of, just trust me. So there are a lot of, there are a lot of studies that show that you get money back. You know, more money comes in than you spend on the arts. So it's very important to continue to spend money on arts and events and culture. We do work directly with local businesses, and, you know, most of our events have food trucks, and a lot of those are, are local businesses, the food trucks that come in there. Let's see, make a place to, a home. Yeah, I think people really want to come to, to an area that has arts and events happening. So it's a great happening thing. If, you know, if we think back to when we had some of the really successful First Fridays before COVID happened, and we had, you know, that group of people would come downtown, and that was such a great scene. You know, we'd like to see some of that stuff come back, you know? But that's, you know, we can work with, we can work with Downtown Business Association, Chamber to see how we can get some of those things going again. But those are the kind of scenes that people like to see, and they like to, you know, they like to be part of that, so. And then, again, we talked about the movie on Main, and you can see we did Shrek, and you can see the people that were there. And it was a lot of fun. We had popcorn that we were giving out to, to the people, and, and the board stayed afterwards and cleaned up, so just letting you know that. EDI. So I think last year, we did a good job of bringing in a more diverse set of events to the city. Some examples of that. The picture you see is the Taiko drumming that happened, and that was also a participatory event where people were able to go up and do Taiko drumming at the end of that. And it was, it was a lot of fun to see the little kids up there, you know, banging on those big drums, you know? So that was fun. That was a great event. Yours truly ran sound on that, and it didn't sound too bad. It was okay. So we did that. Last, one of the other things we did last year that had about 40 attendees was a presentation of local resident Sal Scoggs' Celebrate Trans project. And so we did that at the library, and we had, about 40 people came. Many people brought their trans children to that event so that they could, you know, come in there and talk to members of the trans community that were there during the presentation. So that's another example. Could you guys think of any other? Middle Eastern concert? Mohammed said, I'd like to do some Middle Eastern music. And I said, well, go find a band, and we'll book it, and, and it happened, so. So we did that. So it was like, yeah, so we, we were reaching out, trying to do more of that. This year, continuing on with that, this year, we, you know, we've started a world music series, and so we've had, we've had Native American flute music. We've had Didgeridoo. We've had Japanese music. Brazilian quartet. So, yeah, so we're bringing in more diverse music than, you know, and events than we've had in years past. I think the board is a very diversified board, and that is owed to City Council. So when people apply for the board, the members that you've selected have all been, you know, great. And so thank you for that. We've been able to do that. Yeah, I think that's enough of that. Sustainability. So sustainability. We're, yes, this is Roger Keeler. He's another board member. Thanks, Roger, for coming. We're exploring options to make our largest annual events zero waste, and Iris is rounding that up. We have an event, we have an all-women's mariachi band that will be playing on the 25th of May, and we are working with Lewisville's Cyclory to put bike racks out, and we're encouraging people to ride their bikes to that event. So we're starting to encourage people to use alternative modes of transportation to come to these events. And then we are also working with scraps to see how we can make our largest events zero waste. Now, there's a cost associated with that, you know? It was a lot easier two or three years ago when, you know, when we could compost everything, when you could compost paper, and you could compost compostable cups. And, and those things are not available to us anymore. So now it's a little bit more difficult, and I think we need to step it up a little bit and, and really do a little bit more marketing and education around what, what can be recycled. And I think we could use more signage at, you know, at events, too. And then there's also research into plant-based food truck options that we're doing. So proposed 2025 work plan priorities, not included on City Council's adopted plan. We've established this rhythm for event scheduling by providing new ideas and facilitating connections. So an example of that is this world music series that, that we started. This was, this was one of Iris's ideas, and then she solicited input from the board to say, what kind of world music should we have? The last one was just a couple of weeks ago, and it was a Japanese artist. And at the end of that performance, people were asking Iris, when's the next one? When's the next one? So it's really resonating well. So that's, that's, that's a series we're gonna continue to do, you know? And we'll, you know, we were doing that every month, because in the past, we didn't have events in January, February, and March. But, you know, now we're getting that, now we're getting those things done. So it's, it's really been, it's been really exciting to be part of this board. Vision, uh, development of a vision for public art in Lewisville. So, you know, right now, we have, we have art in the community park. We have several sculptures that are in community park. So I think one of the questions we need to ask is like, well, what's our vision for public art? Do we want to start putting like plinths downtown and have public art displayed downtown? Do we wanna, do we want to start putting public art in the arboretum? So we just have to have like kind of an idea of, what do we want to do with public art? Because we're all in favor of public art, but let's have a vision of what we want that to look like so we can, you know, so we can have a plan that, that makes it go, you know, makes it more efficient. Expansion and increase the cohesion of the arts community in, in Lewisville. I'm drawing a blank on that one. I'm sorry. I went through this. Do you have a?
I think the board and staff have been doing a great job of networking with more artists and organizations around Lewisville and just trying to inform each other of what the future is gonna look like. Like, we had FLYSH here today, you know? So now there's like this cohesion amongst organizations.
And we, and we're establishing a group of local and somewhat local musicians to perform at the different events that we have. So we're establishing that as well. And then Leah mentioned this, so research the possibility for a performing arts center. Now, that's a big ticket item, you know? And we would love to be able to do that. And I think it starts with maybe perhaps a feasibility study, where we can say, is this even feasible, you know, in a town of our population? What would that look like? One of the artists who performed at the World Music Series, he was a Native American flute player, and his wife, his wife was one of the founders and one of the driving people behind establishing the Lone Tree Arts Center. And so I would love to just like even reach out to her and say, how did you start? You know, I mean, just get some ideas and start saying, is it feasible? Can we do it? You know, something that would be kind of low cost, to just kind of see. It, it would be a lot of work, you know? We have, we need to find a benefactor, somebody who wants their name on a performing arts center, so. I think that's, that's all. Are there any, any questions?
Any questions on the presentation first, and we can have a discussion? Yeah.
Directly on the presentation, but kind of a continuation. A lot of the, well, I guess all of the things that you were saying the art center has been doing, or the board, has been located in the downtown area. Do you have any plans to expand this out to the McCaslin Corridor?
Yes, we do. Yes, we do. In fact, one of the ideas we have about performing spaces is if we could talk to who's ever gonna develop where the Cinnabar. uh, who's ever going to develop where the Cinebar is, is that? Can we have a performing space there, you know, that would then support the faculty and students that are going to live there? Could we just have like a plaza and we could start doing some events there? We also, a couple of years ago, we did, we did, uh, we did something at Mother Tucker Brewery. We did a pop-up show there. That was twenty twenty-three, I believe, we did that. But yes, we are, we are looking at that, we're gonna, we're, we're getting to Cottonwood Park. The mariachi band is going to play at Cottonwood Park and we are looking at, you know, can we do some things at the arboretum? So we are looking at that, yes.
So there's also, uh, lady, one of the ladies that owns the new pickleball court that's going in, has said that sponsoring things in their parking lot would be something she would be very interested in doing.
That'd be great, yeah.
Good.
Yeah, that would be great.
And I think this also stems into when there are new developments like JR was mentioning, mentioning along the Cinebar encouraging to have even microspaces, whether it's just a small platform, some shaded area. That'd be something that we would like to encourage thought in any new development. That might be something we partner with those, um, developers with so that it's minimal cost for us. Um, and that can be something that we can also propose, uh, with one of those studies, including would you like micro areas? Would you like them to be, you know, expanded out towards McCaslin, towards smaller parks so that we can have these more integrated, more intimate spaces? If we find that at one point, those larger spaces are maybe ten, twenty, thirty years out, it still gives the communities that feeling that they each have a space for themselves. That again can be used for the whole community at the same time, not just that one space where, let's say there's a bunch of, uh, grad students that are now living there. We get to integrate with that community by having those spaces, um, that may be built by those, companies, uh, developments, but we still get to have the community join those residents.
Thank you, Sarah.
Other questions?
So one other, one, just to add on to what Sarah said, that another item that we would like to talk to developers about is to have like walls where murals could be, you know, installed. So it's just to have that, if you, you know, like if you look at what happened at McCaslin, the underpass at McCaslin to, um, Davidson Mesa, you know, there's a, you know, there's a very nice mural, you know, there, the space was there for it, it was created for that, so.
I, I'll just add that there's also a lot of space that's, uh, kind of a, a buffer between McCaslin and the businesses along McCaslin. That's a very large space that could support some art installations.
Yeah, yeah, we, 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 we would like to do more things over on McCaslin. It, sometimes it's easier, you know, to plan something here, but yeah, we would, we, we definitely know that we need to, to, to branch out, that's one of our, that's one of our, um, objectives is to have, you know, things happening away from, you know, downtown, not all things away from downtown, but, you know, doing, doing, doing more, um, events away from downtown.
Thank you.
Yep, mm-hmm, thank you.
Councilmember Kern.
Thank you, um, first of all, this is awesome and I, I know we're not supposed to have like favorites or anything, I'm just saying I'm leaning heavily, so. So that's kind of building on what Councilmember Fahy was saying about like kind of increasing the occurrences of events and arts and culture things on the west side of town for the other half of the community that could like walk or bike more easily to those events. Definitely partnering with Relish is huge or even like Parma and places like that where they have big huge parking lot spaces. There's actually some stuff set up outside of Ax, uh, the Ascend Church already, like a big permanent pergola space, which is covered that was there when it was Sam's Club, so potentially. But I was curious, a couple of different things too, if you've thought about not music or not movies on McCaslin, but movies near McCaslin, similar concept, you know, something like that. But also the performing arts that have gone on this winter were amazing. Um, and, but it was so sad because they were so limited to the number of people. And I feel like maybe there were a lot of the same people that had the opportunity to attend every single one of them. Do you think there's a way that, um, or guys, have you thought of anything that would allow for rotating, um, residents and more people to participate, um, in those? And on the same lines, have you thought of doing more winter stuff with Sundance Film Festival coming up? And hopefully you guys will be able to be super creative with getting a lot of draw to Louisville. It's a heavy lift for all of you, I understand, but you're the creative version of all of us.
I will say with the, um, tenure contract with Sundance, I think that is something that we will be speaking at the next meeting, um, actually tomorrow. I think that's a massive opportunity to offer spaces, again, touching on, uh, developing more spaces for bringing some of that, maybe it's music, movies, obviously. But yes, that is something we have on the agenda to talk about.
And maybe, maybe, I mean, I mean, like Longmont hosts a lot of films from Boulder Film Festival, right, because they have a performing arts center. But we would have to find, we would have to find a venue that could hold the right number of people to have like Sundance season thing, we might be able to do some smaller, you know, events, but those are pretty, those are pretty big events, you know, in this event spaces. But I think it'd be great to try to partner with them. You know, I have, I, and, and even Boulder, maybe even Boulder, you know, uh, it may be even BIF partner with them. But yeah, it'd be great to, to bring in Sundance and try to get, you know, some work with them.
I'm not sure has, if anyone has been to Sundance, but they are, um, very dynamic in the way they, uh, offer small spaces, sometimes they just set up and it could be a twenty foot by twenty foot pavilion, so they're, they're very, um, they have spaces that become very intimate, so I think we can still offer.
That'd be great.
Spaces for that, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, I just want to say that, um, Mohammed actually introduced me to one of the organizers of the Boulder International Film Festival, so I hope to meet with him and maybe learn what information he has about Sundance already. Kristin and I are going to, um, like a Sundance networking event later this month, so, um, those are exciting developments. Yeah, I'm only worried with both of those film festivals that I don't know where we would host any kind of screening, but we could do events like, that are like corollaries to the festival that are not screenings but something else.
I, I would offer my backyard.
We're going to use JR's backyard, it's decided.
I, I've got three pieces that I wanted to raise or, or the first one kind of is a riff on, on what Councilmember Kern just talked about. I think Sundance is of, of amazing opportunity in about ten thousand ways. Because, a, and I know that staff is already working on this and has been and from a whole bunch of angles, uh, economic vitality and arts and, um, you know, there are going to be space issues, it's just, uh, a whole bunch of potential benefits and synergies and so forth. I went to the, uh, the, I guess it was the press conference that they had when they announced, this and just listened to it in the audience and, you know, it was amazing to hear all of the energy behind it. It was not so thrilling to hear the communities that they visited with the, the group that was evaluating, because we were not on that list, at least that they mentioned and it was a long list. And that, you know, it's disappointing, but I, you know, we, we know that, you know, why that might be. And there's, and there's a lot of partners, the school district, for example, with, um, LMS and Monarch, I mean, there's a whole bunch of layers to this and I think, you know, I think staff will be coordinating and, and, uh, you know, one of the things I think that's, that I hear in some of this is you don't have to take on all these things, you're an advisory board, right? And, you know, it's not going to like fall on your shoulders to, 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 to do all this stuff. And there's just, there'll be a lot of good discussions and you're an essential part of that, I think, no matter what. The second thing is on the art center idea, I know there, there is an effort already on, um, sort of a privately financed art center with a potentially public-private partnership piece. And so that'll be something that I think, again, lots of different stakeholders there, whether it's privately financed or not. So, and, and I know that the, you know, at some level the city is going to be wanting to, to be very much part of that, um, as well as all those other stakeholders. I went, the last thing is, um, I went to a dinner on the twenty-seventh of April by a group called Doing Good On Purpose. I don't know if you've ever heard of this group, I hadn't. It has kind of a, in my view, kind of a goofy name, because it's sort of like, what does that mean? I think they're very much an umbrella around the country that leave their mission to other, you know, to each community to try to figure this out. What they have done, and they've got an executive director in Boulder, but they have undertaken in the last year, a group of, well, many meetings between artists and people in the finance community, venture capitalists, um, Huntington Bank CEO, which is, this Huntington Bank is moving to Louisville, wonderful opportunity, but to try to build a regional arts ecosystem. And to try to get kind of a, to be able to scale some of the efforts, because every community does their own thing in many ways and that's great. Don't want to take away from that, but some of the things we're talking about, um, are huge and deserve a lot of coordination and stuff, and I don't know how that's going to go. I, I throw that out because I don't think I've told everybody on council about it yet, but this just sort of came together, um, as just a explanation. And it was admittedly somewhat, uh, amorphous, right? Even though they'd worked together for about a year, the kind of shape of this is still something that is, uh, you know, becoming clearer, I guess, or clarifying. So that's an opportunity I think the community has and, and maybe some of you might be interested. One, one final point is, I noticed, you know, you have a number of these things on as not included in the city council's adopted plan. I, I look at this and I see many of these things as means to the ends that we are trying to achieve.
Yeah.
You know, the lenses of DEI, hugely important. You've talked about a, a rhythm for providing new ideas and facilitating connections. Well, that's, this is a necessary part of the kinds of things you're doing. Public art is huge, I think that's, again, it's a, it's an issue of diversity, but it's also, I don't know, I think there's a, you've talked about economic vitality and, you know, the, all of these things, I think you've, you've talked about have huge, potentially huge implications, so, you know, those are things that I will encourage you to continue to define and, and to reach out maybe to other, um, you know, other boards and commissions to figure out some common, uh, you know, some commonalities between what you're doing, but I, I really love the things that you do and I, it's an enormous amount of work. Twenty thousand people, I mean, that, that's really, really impressive.
And, and for, for most of these events, it's, this, the people in here are staffing these events, you know, we're volunteering and going and it's, it's fun, I enjoy it, you know, but it's, you know, we're, we're there and, uh, yeah, I appreciate that very much.
Yes.
Go ahead, Iris, sorry, I just wanted to make one little comment. I'm, I'm going to look up this doing good for people, um, doing, doing good on purpose? You're right, it's a little goofy. Um, I'm going to look that up and I guess learn a little bit more about what they're doing, but I also, I'm not sure, um, who the private people are for the performing arts center, but I want to express that, um, basically everybody who seems to have expressed interest in a performing arts center has come directly to us to ask for help on that. And at the moment, I don't really know of any sort of like private entity in Louisville that would be capable of organizing something like that on their own. So they kind of have been asking for us to be spokespeople for this project, which is why we wanted to mention it.
I'll be brief because many of my questions have already been addressed, but first, thank you, thank you for what you do. Your events help make Louisville a wonderful place to live.
Thank you.
And I, I truly enjoy, uh, those events, being a participant. I, I know a lot of work goes into planning and executing those events and I've seen you all running around, uh, doing those things and so it doesn't go unnoticed as well. Yeah, um, so the, the question I had that wasn't asked tonight is there was mentioning, I think Diana, it was your slide about an arts and culture master plan? And that, I'm going to be honest, is the first time I've seen that, um, and.
I personally haven't seen it, so.
Yeah, and, um, you had mentioned tonight some desire to have some, some planning. So I'm thinking, you know, with Sundance over the next two, ten years, this is the first time I've seen it. When was the last time it was updated? Fun fact, anybody have it?
Yeah, it's made as a consequence of the comp plan, so the last one was like twenty seventeen, I think. And it's on the website as well.
Okay, so as a consequent of the comp plan, meaning with the new comp plan?
So the, it was supposed to be, the last one was made as, um, a step after the last comp plan and now with the new comp plan, we have been considering whether to do another one. I read the one from twenty seventeen, a lot of what's in that one is honestly still very relevant, so we would just maybe add on to it.
Okay, I, I mean, I would love to keep this conversation going between our groups, especially with the economic vitality opportunities that are going to present in the next decade. So let's keep that on our radar, um, if we need additional resources to execute on that update. Thank you.
I don't have a whole lot to add, but, uh, um, you know, I think art is, is such an interesting, element of society, right? It kind of feels like you get to, you know, Maslow's hierarchy needs, like art is like, oh, okay, I've got all my needs, but now I can care about art. And at the same time, it's one of those things that can exist when you have nothing, right? You, you, still art matters and, and, and reading and culture and dancing and singing and being together is something you don't need anything to, to appreciate and care for. So it like seems to be on both ends of that spectrum of what a society, um, creates for itself. And so I, but I do think that, you know, when there's a lot of art present and the great thing about the word art is define that, right? Like all the, the, I had a wonderful conversation with my, in my mother's day about art. It's like, yeah, like art is such a incredible concept, visual or audio or all these different versions of, of art. But when, when a community has a richness of that, where it just feels like there's art everywhere and like the sound is buzzing and visually there's so many things to see and there's, you know, paintings on the wall and statues and music and so many and, and performances, it's just like, it brings life to a community. And so I think what, you know, what you guys are doing is incredibly important and if we, if we didn't have it, we'd survive and if we didn't have it, we wouldn't survive, right? It's like that amazing, uh, piece, so, um, you know, I really appreciate all the work and I, I think, you know, when I'm looking at like, is it in the purview? And what does council need from you guys? I think, you know, thinking big about, you know, how we continue to move art forward in our community, if that's a, if that's a performing arts center, if that is, you know, really making this, you know, downtown vision plan, uh, a powerful, you know, art space in the next decade or whatever that is, there's a budget, there are plans, there's work plans, it all has to fit within something in some ways, but like every board, you know, your job is to bring forward this piece and compete against other things and say, hey, what if this was the biggest priority? And so it may not be in our work plan right now, but the only way things get on a work plan, right, is, is, is people pursuing that and it becoming a convincing enough thing that we all decide as a community, in which we're only representatives of, that, that, yeah, that's, that is going to get to that, to that moment, right? And so Sundance Film Festival is absolutely a catalyst for having a financial backing that like it would pay dividends potentially to do these sort of things, like, oh, for the first time ever, maybe, spending millions of dollars could actually bring back millions of dollars and then we have it, right? And then we have it for the other eleven months of the year that, that aren't Sundance. And so, um, I really encourage you guys to keep looking at that and seeing what those possibilities are and challenge. and challenge our community and challenges council to think about what those investments could be. And have them be timely enough that they, they, they benefit us, you know, in the next couple of years.
Appreciate that.
Others, yes, Councilmember Cooperman.
Just to follow up on that, I think one of the earlier slides talked about tradition. Having events become so popular that people from outside Louisville say, oh, springtime's coming. I remember this event that they had in the spring, they've done it two years in a row, let's, we're, we're excited for this, it's, it's top of mind for them. I think that eventually becomes something that is so self, self-sustaining that, that hierarchy of needs is now aside. So I think that is, that's something we've been talking a lot, like what are these traditions? These events that become traditions that we want to focus on a lot more.
And to follow up on that real quickly, we actually had a conversation with Will Scherer down here that has the violin shop. And, excuse me, we want to try to do an old time fiddle contest and we want to start that this year. We want to start that this year. We hope we could maybe do it, you know, with, with the farmer's market. We'll do it in August. If not, we'll do it, you know, otherwise. But he's really excited about trying to do this, so I think that'll happen this year and I think that could become a tradition. You know, we're gonna try to get at least ten contestants this year, but then have an old time fiddle contest. I do think that'll, that'll grow into an annual thing, you know.
Love it. And, you know, there is a thing about tradition. It's like if you can get an event, I don't know, two, three years, it's existed since time immemorial.
Right.
It's gonna be a tradition. It's like from way back.
Yeah.
And, you know, you can, we can feel it that way.
Absolutely. And we have so many people.
Yep.
Who's, who's coming to play in the park? So.
Good, thanks. Other questions? Oh.
So I did, so Councilmember Kern, you asked a question about difficulty getting into events. And so one of the things we have right now, it's not really a challenge. We do those, we do those events, you know, through like Event, Eventbrite. And they're free, right? We take the money, you know, for that, the budget for that, they're free. So we always like, we always like overbook the event just a little bit because we know a certain number of people are not going to show up because it's a free event. So they've got no skinny in the game if they don't show up. People have been very good about that though, but, you know, it's, it's really kind of difficult to, to try to determine, you know, how can we get more people in? Because you're right. I mean, it's like, it sells out, some of these sell out really quickly. Yeah, and, and so, yeah, we would like to, we'd like to, you know, figure out how, how do you make that, you know, different? And then we have some events that don't sell out. So it's like, you know, but the popular ones to do. One of the things we did a couple of years ago is we have, we often have a silent movie night at the Center for the Arts. And so that's a, that's kind of almost a tradition. We do that most years. And what we have done in the past is we've asked the person who does it, they're from Boulder, to not send it out to his crowd. Don't send it out to your mailing list. We're gonna send it out to Louisville residents first. So they do get the first opportunity to come to that, you know, because that books up really fast. So, yeah. Thank you. Any, any other questions?
Yes, Councilmember Cooperman.
I was gonna ask you about sort of the structure of the board, but you kind of addressed that already. So, and when, when I've gone knocking doors when I was running for council, one thing that often comes up is Downtown Lafayette for a variety of reasons. But one of them is the public art that you see in Downtown Lafayette.
Yeah.
And I, I'm actually just, I'm curious, have you thought about like a joint meeting with their arts board? Or probably staff collaborates?
I think you've done that already. Yeah, if you want to address.
Any kind of collaboration like that?
Yeah, I have the contact information for people from Lafayette and I've spoken to them at other events that we've been jointly at. I know a lot about their public art program that goes downtown, which is like a rotating art program. And it's something that I'm advocating for at the downtown vision planning meetings. Of course, you know, Lafayette has a much larger budget for public art and like triple the staff, like exclusively for public art, not just art and events. So we have to keep that in mind as well when we make that comparison. But I think when we renovate Steinbach, that's an excellent location for a rotating art, like sculpture exhibit. Similarly, when we're talking about Main Street, there's opportunities there and outside of downtown. So hopefully we can explore all of that and learn from Lafayette.
Others? Okay, yes.
I said this quietly, but I'll say it a little bit louder. What about, sorry, what about doing, I have to say, like, I love the, the concerts in the park. I think having to be able to sit, being able to be in the shade, not stand in the hot sun in front of Steinbach to listen to music is just amazing. And kids of all ages are having so much fun playing in that giant park. It's incredible, right?
It's a great event.
And the dogs, I mean, I love, so it's, it's a really great thing. For me, it's like something I look forward to in the summer personally, and my husband even does, so it's really nice. But what about adding a fifth? Like if it was like your fiddlers or something less expensive is, I don't know. I just didn't know how difficult it is for you guys to come up with more of those summer nights that are so amazing. I feel like that's less an outside Louisville, but it's really a Louisville resident draw. I mean, I hear, I mean, I live on the west side of town and I hear about this all the time from people. They love and they plan for those events and come in, so I just thought I would throw that out there so you guys knew.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, we've done a few other events, you know, in community park. Last year we had Rin Van. But it was a really hot day and I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be brutally honest here. The setup in, in that park to perform in the middle of the day, i- it's really bad because the sun's right in their eyes. And at night, you know, when the sun starts to go down, it's a beautiful, beautiful venue. But it, there's, there's no protection from winter sun, so it's, it's kind of, it's, it's, it wasn't designed well. So, but anyway, yeah, we, I mean, so that would be great if we could get to a point where something like the old time fiddler's contest really takes off and becomes this big thing, you know? Because there's some phenomenal bluegrass musicians and old time musicians along the front range. I mean, phenomenal. So, you know, yeah, that would be, you know, definitely something that we could consider. And, you know, we've even talked about like, well, we'd like to tie it into like a fair theme, you know? And you could have fair food there and then, I don't know, people can come, 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 you know, with their chickens and sheep, I don't know. You know, I'm just thinking, thinking long term, so, yeah. But, but yeah, we would love to be able to do that, so.
I, I'm looking at some of the questions that are down at the bottom of the presentation. And probably I'd be remiss if I didn't talk a little bit about the kind of, are the items within the purview of the board and advice advisory council? It's a, this board historically has been very interesting because it's been more of a working board than many of the other, but that doesn't mean the other advisory boards don't work on stuff. It's that the level of involvement has been pretty significant over time. And, and that's something, you know, I, I think probably is a, sorry, you know, staff has talked about that piece. One of the things I, I think just in terms of maybe the way that some of, and, and I realize this, this may or may not be new. It's, it's technically council that's making awards, right? It may be good to, to just distinguish between advising us and making recommendations. I think, and that's partly as a matter of all of the boards and commissions are, are doing that kind of thing. And I think that's the way it filters up to us.
Right.
But that, I think, is a, is a matter of sort of defining how the boards work. That's new in the last several years. We've kind of changed that. Some boards, it, it has changed more because they've been in a different place than other, other boards. But, you know, I, I'm pretty pleased personally with the, the, the things that you've outlined. I don't know whether other council members, I guess it would be good to kind of give you a sense of whether we put the stamp of approval on this. But I, I'm pretty impressed with, thank you, things that you've done. And, you know, I don't know, I hear some, a lot of, you know.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just, I'll echo the enthusiasm for a lot of the projects, the, and all the good work you've done and the building traditions. I mean, I think that couldn't be more important. The one that I'll, I'll throw a little cold water on is just the arts center. I mean, I think you all recognize that's a, that's a big lift and a big pile of money.
We're just dreaming.
I, I don't think there's any harm in, in thinking about it and talking about it and talking to Lone Tree and the, the other great arts centers around. You know, I'll just say from our perspective, it's not sort of in any immediate budget plans. And, and certainly there are other advisory boards, the golf advisory board comes to mind, who would also like a new golf clubhouse to the tune of tens of millions of dollars. And just, just want to be realistic that that money isn't somewhere under our sofa cushions.
So through the mayor.
I was told that last year too, that I was a little ambitious.
But I, I love, I love the dreaming big and certainly don't, don't want to be the wet blanket.
Oh, no, you're not, not at all.
Realism.
Not at all. I appreciate that.
He's not saying it, but he's probably the best musician on the council. I know you didn't, you didn't claim that, but I'll, anyway, yeah.
So two items, under the Recreation Advisory Board meeting, it was brought up related to replacement of the golf clubhouse, that that could be an opportunity to expand it. So it's not only a golf clubhouse, but also a cultural center or an art event space. And so that's something, if this board could potentially work with the Recreation Advisory Board in terms of ability to combine the projects, maybe have different funding sources that could contribute towards it, that may be an option. Number two, with the, the upcoming five-year anniversary of the Marshall Fire, this could be an opportunity as well for this board to determine what some type of memorial would look like. I know Superior is already working on plans for a memorial. And so this is not something that councils discussed previously, but it's going to take some planning to determine what that looks like and whether it's some type of art piece or something like that. And so, yeah, if, if council wanted this board to consider that as well in terms of, you know, developing concepts or something for council to consider, this would be an opportunity because it will take some time.
On that one, a little bit of history, and I think others will probably chime in on this. We, we certainly had our challenges in trying to figure out how to do that. And I, I think in past, in past councils, I, I think the, the decision was made to pull back and let this sort of percolate up. Because clearly in the one time where we dealt with potentially a sculpture that might go into the burn area, we had a really, I mean, it was a challenging set of discussions. I think that's one where really important to talk to Marshall together and to involve a lot of the people who are directly, but, but that, that's not, I mean, I think it's, it's absolutely, you know, Superior has got the right attitude because you can't do these things overnight. And five years is coming up faster as you're suggesting. But looking at some of that history may be a good guide to just doing it in a fulsome way. Because I think this city will be very interested. I think all the city will be really interested in commemorating that in some way, somehow. So I, I second what, what the city manager's saying, it's a good, it's a good effort. It's just one of those things where there, it's really easy to stub toes. I, I think the other thing is the person on council you might want to talk about or talk to is, is the Mayor Protan. Because he was in, in the group, Louisville Rising was very, very instrumental. And the big sort of mover on, on the pet memorial. And there's a lot of experience there, you know?
Yeah.
Just, yeah, so other thoughts?
I'll add two things. There's probably two other council members who know a lot about how people feel. And that would be Councilmember Fahy and I, the two of us also, we lost our homes in the fire and are very intimately involved every day with people who continue to live this. In fact, my husband's already planning for a plaque to go on our home that says five minutes to burn, five years to rebuild, because we're still just about to break that. So I think the sensitivity to all of that and the fact that instead of a memorial, maybe more of a celebration of how incredible this recovery has been for the people directly impacted.
Yeah, thanks. So, yeah, so when, when, so the community resilience sculpture that's out in front of the city hall was intentionally, that call went out on Cafe for to do a memorial. And I think I was on the board, so at that time. And I think we didn't do a very good job. I think we did a good job of picking something that was really nice, but I don't think we did a really good job of involving, you know, as many community members as we should have, especially, you know, the people that were impacted most by people who lost their homes, you know, by the Marshall Fire. And I think we kind of overlooked that a little bit. Everything about the, the process was, was good. We just didn't talk to the right people. We talked to people, but we could have done a better job on that. And so, and that also has impacted some of the public art, you know, moving forward because that was delayed, you know, because of what we're talking about. And so we've had a couple of years before we've been able to do a really big, you know, impactful public art piece. And I would like to, I think we could start looking at that again this year. But, yeah, it was, it was, it's definitely time to, you know, to think about that and definitely work with the different groups. And, you know, because we, we didn't do a good job of that last time.
Give you the last word. I wouldn't be too hard on yourselves for that. I think that you are walking into a whirlwind.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, yeah, I'm falling on my sword, so.
But I'll give, you know, other, other thing, do you have a sense of?
I was gonna say, it seems like there's been creations of many community outlets for us to connect to. I think there were fewer of them when we were creating that sculpture, but there are many more now that we can connect with and do a better job on that.
I don't have anything else. Did you have anything? Anybody? Nope, nothing? All right, okay.
Thank you so much for joining us.
Thank you so much for your time. I know it's, I know it's, you know, not a normal, you know, it's a special meeting. So I appreciate all your time coming on. I really want to thank the members of the Cultural Advisory Board who came to support this. I really appreciate you guys showing up, so.
And we appreciate having all of you here. It's, it's impressive.
This, this is a great board. This is the best board I've, I've served with. It just is, so.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you so much.
All right, our next item is the executive session, and I think I'll turn to the city attorney.
Melinda, as noted on the meeting agenda, the city manager is requesting an executive session for the purpose of discussing real property acquisitions and dispositions pursuant to section five two C of the Home Rule Charter and CRS twenty four six four oh two four A specifically as to appraisals and other value estimates and strategy. Prior to entertaining any motion, the interim city clerk will read a statement required by the city code. It is the policy of the city to conduct public business and meetings open to the public. While in executive session, it is inappropriate to take straw votes, keep minutes, or to make any final decisions. It is the duty of each member to ensure that executive sessions are conducted in strict compliance with this ordinance, state and federal law, and any applicable provisions of the state and federal constitutions. If at any time the scope, nature, or parameter of this executive session goes beyond the publicly stated topic, it is the responsibility of council to terminate and cease any further deliberation within the executive session and return to the public meeting. Only those topics described in city ordinance may be discussed in an executive session. Those topics are summarized as follows. One, where federal or state law requires that the information be, being discussed remain confidential. Two, certain personnel matters involving only employees directly appointed by the city council and other personnel matters upon request of the city manager or mayor. Three, consideration of water rights and real property acquisitions and dispositions, but only as to appraisals, value estimates, and strategy. Four, legal consultation with an attorney representing the city with respect to pending litigation.
Regarding the authority for the executive session, section five two C authorizes an executive session for the purpose of discussing. for the purpose of discussing real property acquisitions and dispositions, but only as to appraisals and other estimates of value and strategy. An executive session for these purposes is also authorized by the open meetings law, section twenty four six four oh two four A of the Colorado revised statutes. The request involves potential acquisition of real property. With that, you may entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Thanks. Um, moved to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing real property acquisitions and dispositions and that the executive session also include city manager Diana Langley, deputy city manager Samah Fox, community development director Rob Sakaro, and deputy city attorney Linda Colley. Can I get a roll card? Yeah, any discussion? Okay, can we get a roll call?
Mayor Lee.
Yes.
Councilmember Hefner.
Yes.
Councilmember Fahy.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Dickinson.
Yes.
Councilmember Cooperman.
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kern.
Yes.
We will adjourn to executive session. We'll resume the meeting with a report after that executive session. Thank you.